Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
We move on down to public comment? Do you have any public comments? Okay, we move on down to the public hearing on annexation of provisions of ORS 222.125 on withdrawal of rural properties from Lake County Rural Fire Protection District. We'll open the public hearing. Staff report, Darrell?
Uh, there's three annexation areas, uh, proposed. You see that?
I don't see that.
Anyway, the Orgis Solar site, um, which includes a couple descriptions based on the different zone that they're, and ties with the comprehensive plan. The second one is the Red Rock Biofuel Site, which is urban growth boundary was changed to accommodate that, and includes that area on Rebert Avenue. And the third site is off of Rebert Avenue, or the...
Darrell, I think you meant Cadreous on that last one?
Yeah. What did I say?
Reberta, that would've been Cadreous.
No, Cadreous down there, excuse me. Third one, off of Reberta, includes the man camp that was built for the pipeline project. Those blocks right there. So we have a little better draw-up of them on the zoning maps. I think everyone might have a copy. The Red Rock Site, uh, and Cadreous Road. Cadreous was broken up into two descriptions because the first part was zone industrial, second part was commercial. The Orgis Solar Site, um, also had a couple descriptions to comply with the zoning in the...
Where is that, where is that located?
This one?
Yeah, because I don't see streets named.
Uh, well, there is very rare here. This is, no, actually Missouri's down here. Missouri Avenue's down here. This is Rabbit Hills Road.
Okay.
Goes out to the, uh, prison.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, this side and road over here is the Dusenberry Log and Road, that private road owned by Tremont Sollum. Uh, zoom out a little bit, Darrell. Uh, Hunter's Hot Springs would be about up there.
So this Solar site's in the place where the uranium tailers used to be?
Used to be.
And it's really nothing good for agriculture or anything there now? It's basically just, or what?
And there was zone industrial on it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep. Something else, just a way, a bit of history, that site is also, they had, um, started developing a couple of years ago, um, had a site, had a place auctioned, um, when we bring, when we, we had, they were using part of their power and stuff that's going out of the site is going through our right-of-way. And they also wanted, um, town services out there, so as its current policy, we have them sign an annexation contract. And as a utility, we then get a percentage of, and with property taxes, we get a, coming in, and that was part of our agreement, we get a percentage of their, um, utility surcharge. It's, I think, a thousand dollars to megawatt, so it's a nice little fee, but it's something that encouraged solar development, so that's another reason. So we've had a long-term contract, we decided to do it now because we're kind of trying to do both the properties at once to save expense because newspaper publication and other costs go in, so that's why we're doing it all at once. Couple of the cleanup, and then obviously Red Rock needs to happen, so if they can move forward with the development.
Uh, the last one is, includes Reberta Avenue, um, from South Nine Street to Highway 140. Our, uh, sewage treatment ponds, part of them are right here. And that area already makes, this area includes that man camp that, that was built on county property, um, back to the pipeline project. This was part of a consent to annexation, uh, in the county for utilities, or the pipeline for utilities out there, they had consent to the annexation.
So again...
That area really hasn't changed since the consent was done.
And again, it didn't make sense until now to kind of bring everything together, so that's why we're kind of doing it all at once, just to save administrative costs. Because regardless if you do one or 10, it's the same set of newspaper publication, public hearing notices, and then multiple transmittals to multiple state and, and local agencies. So we try to combine them all we can.
Could I ask, what's, what's the reason that, um, the solar project wants to be annexed?
We made that a condition, uh, they, we made that a condition of them using the right-of-way. Because they were running, the, the feeder lines off the solar are running through a right-of-way that we have, and also partially, they, I think there's some kind of town, there's some town services that they wanted, but the primary reason, Darrell, you were around when that happened.
They're going, they're going around what would be the extension of Reberta.
Yeah.
As you've seen there.
So it's, they're going into a city street, so we made that a condition of them doing that with signing, as part of their agreement, was consenting to annex in. So that's why...
I, I guess, I, I'm trying to, so the county has, has pretty much washed their hands of it, because that was in the county, right?
Correct. The county has nothing to do with it. They didn't own anything related to it. This is between us and the solar provider.
Well, they owned the land. I mean, the county didn't own the land, but it was in the county.
Correct. And the county does not have any ability to stop us from annexing or not. Um, in fact, the county still gets to collect taxes on it afterwards, it's just that tax pool gets shared among the county and the city. So they don't have a right to say, they, the only reason they are involved at all, the other one, is that was actually county property, they're just another landowner, that's why the other one is.
My, my concern, well, you're not ready for testimony. I, I guess my main concern on, on the one north, I, I know the one about Red Rock and the man camp, um, but my concern is that we're, we're doing a lot of urban growth boundary and putting it into the town, and, and I have some concern about that. It just is going too far into the county when you get to that, and you're almost to the edge of the urban growth boundary as it is for town utilities. So I have some concern why they want water and why they want to be in the town. Yes, it was part of their contract, but why?
That's what's something that we negotiated because they were coming in, they were using town property, the right-of-way, the road, for what was coming out, power generation. The actual transmission lines are literally running through what's, what is platted street for us. So it's being done.
Right.
Because they are using our property and it, because they're on our property and everything else, we wanted control of that plus, then we are able to share in property tax revenue from that. So those are part of the reasons. Because we gave them permission, that was generally, I think, the reason that the town did what they did on that direction.
Don't you have to go, it seems backwards. It seems like they, it, we should, you should have done the annexation before they even got developed. I mean, I had, I have concern about this project anyway, because I live close by there. And we never got notified about that project happening. We never got a letter from anybody. We never received anything until it was done, when I saw that they were applying for USDA Rural Assistant Grant, and the, and the EIS came out. And so they, they worked backwards on this project. They got it done, they came out with the EIS to get more funding, and I just think, you know, they've done this backwards. And I, and I just don't agree with taking a lot of urban growth boundary. I mean, you're not going to want to put houses out of there, so you're taking housing situation. Have you looked into properties adjacent? I mean, I, I look at it as the whole thing of, of planning and urban growth boundary and for housing, since we need housing around here. And I, I just, I, the, the solar project isn't really a bad thing right now to me because I was never notified of this project happening. And it's literally right out there. So I, I'll, I'll hear more. Sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah.
Are you, help sorry for someone?
Sarah and I have already talked about this multiple times, but the legal notice requirement was bad for that property when I handled the land use, so. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of other people would like notice on land use decisions, and, that's all I'll say to that. The legal process was handled, there was no opposition. From Millennial Group was the, primarily the major landowner that's already in the town, but is just to the south.
Right. Unfortunately or unfortunately, the law mandates on planning only certain property owners and that is pretty much just totally adjacent to it to...
In this case, it was, it was industrial zones who was only 100 feet.
Correct. And that's just unfortunately, if, and again, that's, those are state-level requirements. Those aren't anything that the, the local municipalities or towns do, so that would be one to talk to the legislature about on that.
Well, yeah, I've already been in touch with Greg Walden and different things on this, but when they took out that loan, when they were done, and essentially saying they hadn't started, I've already talked to Greg about that. But, um, my next question is, when are we going to stop? Are we going to keep going to Geiserview Lane? Are we going to take in Hunter's the next one? I mean, I, I guess I just see this as, as bigger, a bigger picture than, than just doing this for the solar company.
And I don't, I can't speak to that. It depends on, because a lot of it, it's not something a lot of times that the town, and again, I'm just speaking as legal counsel, but that's something that the council would have to look at on an application-by-application basis. So they were a special circumstance because they were coming through the, um, again, most stuff that is not, you know, and again, anybody that, anybody now that ties into city and water, and this is universal across all cities in Oregon now, and Lake, that was what was weird about Lakeview, anybody that wants municipal services now, going forward, has to sign a consent to annexation. Because if you're getting those services, you're frankly, even with your water rates, there's a lot of other stuff that gets provided that you're really not paying for. So that's why lots of, anybody, any newer knew, and it was an aberration that they were doing water and sewer outside of the town limits without requiring those consent to annex. So for, I think, the last 20 years, it's been pretty much required, since at least the 90s. So that's kind of what the policy is now. So that's how that generally works. So it depends on what somebody is doing out there, and if they want to connect municipal water supply, and again, just because of consent doesn't necessarily mean that the town is in a position to want to do it right now. There's a lot of factors that go into that. So I don't know that there's any plans, any way, or anything like that. There's nothing that's been brought up, as far as I know. And you'd have to talk to the planning director.
Do you think of? Darrell?
You get ready to go to the next one?
Yeah, let's go.
That was all three. Yep, those are all, those are the three, I have to go back to the zone.
Does the council have any questions on any of these parcels?
I haven't.
Not on these two parcels. We've talked about the others, so, you know, eventually, there could be future annexations. But again, the urban growth boundary is set up for bringing things into the town limits, and again, the town benefits from this.
Correct.
It's something that we should want, and as long as we can adequately provide services without bringing up a huge cost, not to go out for extra bonds to pay for those services that we can't currently provide, then we're, we're doing the right thing to bring in more, you know, tax revenue to provide those services. We're primarily already providing for those customers, those people that live, you know, in the area that have signed either consents to annex or, you know, need the services because of the businesses that they're bringing or have brought.
Sharon Faulkner has done a hold of Dawn and would like to be brought in, so we might need to kind of rehash that just a little bit for Sharon's. Anything?
Yeah. I have a question for you, Darrell. Because of the, the original line of water that goes in front of our house, that was through Goldmore Terrace, that, that was done not through the town, but now the town has that line, where, where would we, where would we fall in to that category of, we don't want to be annexed into the, into the town at some point? Because we bought all that, all the stuff, we paid for all of it. So where, how does that, because I've always wondered about that.
Well, you came in, and the law district was...
Right, 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 okay. So it was my fault you were getting delayed call? Right.
So, that might be a question for Jeff, but I think...
Can you, because...
Assistant services are there now.
Right. Can you hear?
I would think so.
Okay.
And I don't think...
You might have to speak up, everyone, if you could.
Sharon, we got a question about, just in general, about annexation, about the South Suburban, or what suburban, excuse me, Suburban Water District down in Goldmore Terrace that came in because the district was failing. And I don't believe there was any forcing of annexations besides or anything like that. We just took it over so that the thing didn't fail. That was, that was a different, that was a different process. We're talking about new water services going up.
Okay, and but where would that fall in if I, because if, if you're going that way, my concern is, you're really close to where I'm at. Real close. And I don't really, at this point, want to be in the town. I wouldn't be ever, able to have livestock. I mean, there's things that I wouldn't be able to do, um, on, on farms, so I have a concern a little bit about that.
I doubt they would be willing to go out that far, or are you in the urban growth boundary?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on this side, the south side of the road.
That would be something you would have to probably initiate yourself at that point. And the other option that you can have in the future is if you, if there's ever, you have the option of switching out of the urban growth boundary, because we're, by law anymore, we're not really allowed to expand it. County got in trouble, County Falls got in trouble for doing that fairly recently.
So, but, but the water that we have access to and the pipes that we paid for...
I don't think, or you guys had already paid for that, I think, with the district before.
Before, right.
So we just took over the district to make sure it stayed in operation. That was, I think, what had happened under that. And again, some of this is before my time, so I apologize, and I think Jeff can speak to that more.
At the, at the original agreement, there was never any connection made between forcing customers to annex, and, and the thing was far from paid off. I mean, we did, we accepted a huge amount of debt with that system, probably close...
But, but we paid our system. I mean, every, every landowner had to pay for the, we had a commercial, and we had a residential spout in front of our house. All that we, and we had to pay for that.
Your fees to be hooked up, right.
Right. And I paid $5.62 every month.
Yeah. The system itself was far from paid off. You know, we, we accepted a bunch of, of debt with that system, but I think when we took that over, there was never a connection made between supplying that water and forcing people to annex. Because another factor is the fact that there's no sewer systems out there. You know, so that, that's as important or more important than the water itself, so I don't, I don't think the fact that we continue to run that system out there is going to have any bearing on annexation.
No, and, and like I said, unless you guys were wanting to add in sewer, you know, the district as a whole, or everybody out there wanted to add in sewer, that would probably be a different, and then again, the town would also have to have capacity to do that. I don't know if we do or do not, but that, the annexation requires providing full, if you come into the town, you're entitled to full-town services, and that, that would obligate us to put those...
So they're having sewer as well? They'll have sewer?
I'm not sure. If they want it, they can. If they don't want it, they don't have to. It's, it's up to them.
It's not a required, just like everybody here in town?
If they want it, we have to provide it, because they're in the town limits. We have, if they want a service, we have to put it out there. We're obligated to do that. It depends on what they need and what they're doing there. If they've got like a little monitoring shack or something with a bathroom in it, we put that, that's something we got to put in.
Are we talking about Orgis here?
Yes.
We do have super services helping.
Up here, sir.
Hey Sharon. If you didn't want to do this, because we have three. So do you...
I prefer if she wants to participate, she can participate. Or if she wants to carry on.
Yeah, there'll be a vote today. Are we annexing the suburban district, right?
No, we're annexing the Or, the Orgis Solar property.
No, the Orgis Solar property.
The Cadreous Road.
Cadreous Road.
And Reberta Road, and a couple of parcels of county property that were part of the man camp. Somebody just had a general question about annexation, that's why they were asking about it.
Yeah, it was just a general question, that's all that somebody had, if we were annexing that, so. So, okay. Okay, I can leave that, I'll call you back. Okay, bye. Bye. Said to call it for the summary and the vote.
Okay.
So, there, there's stuff around the man camp, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, in holdings, which equals probably 11 actual platted lots.
Right.
Is there a reason why those are not included? I mean, obviously, we didn't have their consent, but at the same time, they're going to become islands, which would probably...
They didn't consent at the time, and all we're doing is consensual ones, so if there's no islands, that's something you guys can address at a future date. But there's more, that process, again, we've never done it, and that process is a much more complicated, that I think goes outside the scope of what this is.
So the only other concern I have, and it's been, we've been talking about annexations for a long time, and obviously, there have been a lot of different folks who have signed letters of consent to annex, and, you know, we were told, at least the council was told since I've been on, that we would try to do them in a process all at once, similar to this process. And they're not included, obviously, in this. We're talking three main property owners, none of which are the ones I'm really thinking are really the main users of our water and sewer currently that have already signed those letters. I'm just wondering, when will we get to those? Because there, there's obviously, I mean, we've heard in this same meeting group setting where there's, you know, a figure of, of tax revenue that could be getting that would equal what currently we're proposing to adopt as a service, you know, charge for police and private...
We've, we've talked about that a little bit in a meeting today, we had three this meeting, and one of the things that I think Public Works wanted to do along with everybody else is do a study on it a little bit, and just get an idea of what, because again, some of these water systems that where there are consent signs and stuff like that are getting pretty old, and if you take in a whole bunch at one time, then you're kind of obligated to do something about it all at once. And so they want to look at what that's going to cost, if a bond would be necessary, and sometimes you can do bonds and charges for specific areas, so that they're paying for their own stuff and bring it up to date. So that's all something that I think would be a valiant to do, but I would request you, let's get some more information about that, so you guys can make an informed decision. Because, yeah, legally you can do it, but there are logistical constraints to it that I think you guys need information on to make a determination about what you want to do one way or the other. These ones are necessary for some kind of big developments, you know, they're kind of very specific, which is why it's kind of a separated process.
I mean, we'll have another hearing on, on the rest of them.
As, depending on which ones you want to do.
When, yeah, because when we do this study, and I'd like to know exactly who's already signed them, and then obviously the people who are using our services already, because there'll be a lot of checkerboarding probably that happens with, you know, people who have signed up for new services and, and have, uh, signed up, signed that letter of consent, but then there's going to be, you know, those that own their houses for four, 50 years, and, or it's been a family who never signed it, although they're in urban growth boundary, they're on what appears to be a town lot, but, and is receiving both services, sewer and water, but not paying...
A couple of directors of, did not, like I said, back in this, I think it was the 70s, they would, they just expanded water and sewer like crazy. And that's where you get a lot of the water sources, sources in the south side of town, you've got them on T U and B streets, so it's all different. So again, we're kind of doing some cleanup stuff over years of kind of a, of a policy change, right, wrong, or indifferent, and stuff we're doing.
So I'm on that whole north solar thing, then that would take in all the town, so there'd be no, no livestock on there, that'd be taken out of the agricultural land? It's now solar then, all that property, 170 some acres?
The only thing that was proposed for the annexation was what's under the solar footprint and ownership right now. Actually, it doesn't, it doesn't go, um...
No, because it doesn't, it doesn't take up the whole thing.
It doesn't go up that far. This, this is a zoning map, this is hash for some zoning, some...
And actually, if there was, and there are people actually that have annexed in that, we don't force somebody, if somebody was already using something for agriculture, we don't force them to quit using it, they just can't expand the use. So for example, you wanted to come in, if you were doing agriculture at a certain level, you can keep doing it at that level, it would be grandfathered, and you just couldn't expand it beyond what you're currently doing. That's how that works with annexation.
That is how it works.
That is how it works.
Do we have anything else on this? Hearing done, and we'll close the public hearing, we're going to council deliberation on these.
We need to probably bring Sharon back on.
Is there another solar going to be north of this one also? Or was that taken off?
Not in the urban growth boundary.
Outside of the urban growth boundary?
Their, their distribution lines are proposed to come through, but not, not the actual part.
Hello, we're going into council deliberation.
They're way, they're way north of here.
Do council deliberation.
It's, it's past Old Smoky, you know, it's left, but...
Yeah. And now it's for you guys to discuss.
We can talk about it.
Okay. Is, are the commissioners there?
No.
Get a council member, Sharon.
Just council members, just Darwin, Mike, and Greg.
All right. So what are we discussing?
Hold on. So you're doing council deliberation.
Let's do, uh, annexes then?
And remove the property from the fire district.
Yeah, and remove the, remove property from the Lake County Rural Fire Protection District, is what it is.
And that's only because they're going to be now within the...
Lakeview, yes. Yes.
Have we, um, made arrangements with them to replace the income that they were, had previously gotten, or how has that worked out?
Legally, you have no obligation to do that. Sometimes they have in the past, and that's something I think Reberta was going to investigate, but under this process, once it goes from one district to another, as of July 1, that is not required by law.
And again, these were vacant, primarily vacant.
But don't we use the funds they contribute to 911? And if they don't have income, how do they make that contribution? Or am I way off base there?
I, they, they do, I think they do make a portion of that, but again, this was, this property was vacant. It hasn't been developed, most, majority of it has not been developed, so it's not really pulling much out. I mean, what was minimal property tax value in the first place. And again, if the town so chooses, they can come up, they can make some kind of fee, they've done that in the past, Darrell's, and that's kind of been the practice sometimes, but sometimes when it's a real nominal amount, we have not.
In the past, I don't know of them replacing any, uh, revenue. I only remember the concern from the annex out towards Reberta with Thomas Creek Westside Rural Fire Protection District, and it was such a, the taxes they collected were such a minimal amount, that the town didn't do anything, but that's been quite a few of the...
Probably looking at less than a hundred dollars a year for all, all the properties combined.
Just because it wasn't being used?
Now, do they pay for the fire hydrants going, if they're going to have water?
Hello? Okay.
She probably couldn't hear everything.
Are there other major concerns that are not annexing?
I don't have any major concerns for not annexing, I don't have any.
None that I know of. Every, every...
Then we have our, um, then we have to have a certain number or, um, public hearings on this, have we done that?
That was what just happened, Sharon. Yes, and we also, because the, because the majority of the electors, the majority of the property owners signed consents, uh... Yes. And we also, because the, because the majority of the electors, the majority of the property owners signed consents, election was not required.
Since we don't have to, because they've already signed an agreement that should annexation become an issue. They've already agreed to doing, that's how they got the sewer and the water in the first place. Is that correct?
That is correct. Every one of these property owners has signed a consent to annex. Sharon.
Sharon, did you hear that?
He said that was correct?
Yeah, and that all these property owners have already signed to annex.
They've already agreed to it this half, and when they took the sewer and water. So I, I don't know of any other impediments to keep us from annexing.
There are no legal impediments to do it, Sharon, from my point of view.
How does the rest of the council stand on this?
How does the rest of the council feel on, Darwin and Mike, how do you guys feel on annexation on this?
There what?
All the rest of the council is in agreement, Sharon, with you.
They all agree.
Okay. I can't hear. He breaks up when he talks somehow.
Hmm, it might.
Well, I can hear you, I can hear Ray, so you guys just can interpret to me.
That's fine. We can do that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have no objections to it. I think it's well past the time. Are we, at this time, annexing like homes and stuff and that little section that's tucked in between?
No, not at this time.
That's not a part of this?
No.
Okay.
Sharon, the properties that are coming in are the OR six solar site, the Cadramis Road and Red Rock site, and, and Roberto Road and some portions of what was the county owned portion of the man camp for.
Well, we have some choice about some of it, but we have to do that Cadramis Road for Red Rock. And so my vote, or my standing on it is to, yeah, let's start whatever we have to do to fulfill this process of annexation.
All right. So I think we can go, is the council, does the council wish to deliberate any further? Darwin or Mike or Ray?
No.
So Ray, I think if you want to, you can close to, make a motion, close the deliberations and go to new business to adopt the ordinance. Anex.
Okay. I have a motion to close the deliberations.
I'll move.
Sorry.
Motion made seconded. Vote in favor. Aye.
Let Sharon know.
Okay, they just closed.
They, they, they moved.
Oh, they moved to close the deliberation.
And they, everybody else.
Everybody else, okay. She's in. Okay.
Do you need a motion to approve the annexation as presented?
We need to go to new business first and then.
Yeah, that, you know, we've got old business ahead of that. We don't have any old business, okay? We're going to new business under the ordinance 864.
Okay, they're doing new business number 864.
Is that the annexation or?
That's the ordinance of the annexation.
My motion to accept ordinance 864 and to be read by title only.
Darwin just made a motion by title only for 864.
I.
I'll second it.
Mike second and I'll, okay.
Okay, and I vote for that.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, we're good.
Now you, now you need to read the ordinance by title and.
Right.
Okay, now he's reading it by title.
An ordinance from, proclaiming?
Correct. Then you, she's, he's reading it, then you guys will vote to pass it.
Then you'll move to pass it.
All right, an ordinance proclaiming and declaring the annexation of certain territories into the corporate limits of the town of Lakeview pursuant to the provisions of O R S 221.125, O R S 222.520, and O R S 222.524, and withdrawing the same from the Lakeview Rural Fire Protection District.
Need a motion to approve the ordinance, I have a question for you, you have to read.
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded. Vote in favor. Aye.
You second, are you in favor, Sharon?
In favor of passing the annexation, takes in Cadramis Road and the Red Rock area and whatever other stipulated areas, yes.
Okay.
All right. American sign now and talk.
Okay, all done. Thank you.
Okay, are you hanging up?
No, I'm going to hang up with you. We're good.
Eric.
Thank you, Sharon. Bye.
If you want to adjourn.
Yeah. Um, as of this time, we have nothing else. And we'll adjourn the meeting at 4:38.